Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone, to the twice monthly meeting of the Mayor and Council of the City of Westminster. If you have an electronic device, please silence it out of courtesy to others for the duration of the meeting. And we are on TV tonight, so everybody be on your best behavior. First item is approval of the minutes from the meeting from November 27th as well as the executive session from November 27th.
I make a motion to approve both the common council minutes as well as the executive session minutes, Mr. President.
Second bet.
Motion, second. Any amendments, deletions, corrections? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is presentations for the Miracle on Main Street Parade winners. Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is this the same thing?
Yes. Different representation.
Okay, all right. So, all right. It's my pleasure to announce the winners of the 2017 Miracle on Main Street Holiday Parade. There's a panel of three judges consisting of local business owners. It sets each parade entry on theme, detail, and brightness in the following award categories. We have Spirit of the Season, Best and Brightest, and Main Street Champion. All winners receive $100 and a trophy. So first, I'd like to recognize Bryant Mann Jr. and Bryant Mann Sr. accepting the behalf of White Pine Haven. And vice versa.
Yes, and just ask Shannon to do that, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Yep.
Speech, not even a speech because of the effect of the music. But I'm great, it's just kidding.
It's a long time to do that. Everybody else is watching, they'll get it right.
Good, thank you.
All right, so, this year, we had two winners, category of Best and Brightest, Carroll County Veterinary Clinic and 4-H Rabbit and is it CAVI or KB Club?
KB.
KB. Dr. Lynn Wimmer, please come forward from Carroll County Veterinary Clinic to accept your Best and Brightest Award. Got the name right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here we go. All right. Next, I want to invite Kevin Brow and Colby Seymour, President of 4-H Rabbit and KB Club, to come forward to accept the Best and Brightest Award. All right. Thank you. All right. So, yeah, some of this here. All right. Great.
Thank you.
All right, last but not least, will John Kirkenhold, Tom Olenek, and Mary Fuller from Home Depot please come forward to accept the Main Street Champion Award? All right, can we do that? Okay, and just want to take a second to thank everybody that entered into the 2017 Parade and for the creativity, time, attention, and detail you put into the process and your floats. Miracle on Main Street Parade did not exist without support and participation. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, so now we have... We'll just hold off a second here. Okay, so we're announcing the winners for the storefront and window holiday decorating contest. Our theme this year was Snow and Love with Main Street. So, the theme was inspired by the city's new snowflake holiday decorations, and you've seen those up on Main Street. You're going to see them in other parts of town, too. I think they were a big improvement. My thanks to Tiambi Page from Cultivated, who came up with the logo for the Snow and Love on Main Street theme, personal friend of mine. Also, thank you to Tony Palmeroy from Palmeroy Jewelers, who donated holiday decorations for the tree outside of our business. I think that looked really nice. So, I'm going to announce the awards. The award for Best Use of Recycled Material goes to Brooke Bowman Real Estate. Torqued on a bunch of cell phones to make her... Well, someone torqued on a bunch of cell phones. Very nice. And the award for Best Business Promotion goes to Sterling Quality Water. They made these using water bottles and lights inside, it was really neat. They're here to accept their award. What's her, how are you?
Thank you very well.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. And the award for Best Kid Friendly goes to Flowers by Evelyn.
She's not here.
She is not here, but just to describe if you haven't seen it, their window design included many elves, snowmen, and Santa Claus. You can definitely tell it had a very child-friendly feel to it. And next, we're going to announce the award for Best Traditional Design, which goes to the Spa on West Main. Is it beautiful, is that? Big prize, the award for Best Overall Design goes to Rock Salt Grill. It definitely is the theme of Snow and Love with Main Street, the beautiful decoration in front and inside.
He did it all himself.
He did it all himself?
(laughter)
Wait, this is... So, at the end, next year, unless you win again, you have to give it back.
Oh darn.
Can we get a picture with that? One must be... There's a picture of this one. There we go.
Or a cocktail.
Just wanted to say thank you to all the 14 businesses that participated in the contest this year, and I think it definitely made a difference. If you drive down Main Street, you could tell there was a little extra spirit this year. Thank you very much.
Before we continue, I'll offer you guys the opportunity to sneak out, so you don't have to sit through the rest of it, but thank you again from the council and the mayor. You guys really do a lot to help Main Street feel like a friendly, welcoming place, and this is a great example of that, so thank you for all your effort.
Rock Salt.
All right. Our next item is the Consent Calendar, Approval of the Public Works Agreement Number A1106 for New Commercial Building Sheets. Mr. Mackey, whoa, where'd he go?
He's right there.
Oh, there he goes.
He just went out, I think.
You're up, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Next agenda item, Sheets, Public Works Agreement.
The consent this evening is to finalize the Public Works Agreement for 1106 for new commercial building on Maryland 140. It's our intention to also bring for you a stormwater management D2B agreement on January 8th. This is the typical process the city uses. The staff represents approval of the document.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Any questions from council for Mr. Mackey regarding the Public Works Agreement?
I make a motion, Mr. President, to approve Public Works Agreement Number A1106.
Second bet.
Motion, second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on to reports for the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Well, taking everyone's time already today, and one of my things I would have reported on were some of the things that we just presented. I think that it was really nice to see the downtown business community really kind of come together and do a great job this year. I think that when you drove down Main Street this year at night, it was tough to notice the... or tough not to notice the effort a lot of people put into decorating the downtown businesses and so forth, and a lot of the residences, too. So, it was really great to drive around and judge the businesses on that, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of them again. And that would be it, President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to council committee reports. Councilman Yengling.
Yes, I do have a report from the Public Works Committee. Last week, on Thursday, the mayor and I went down to see Secretary Ben Grumbles of the Maryland Department of the Environment. We had about an hour-long meeting with him, which was incredibly productive, so I wanted to kind of go over what we discussed briefly for the council and members of the public. As we all know, we face our water challenges here in the city, and we really need to aggressively address these problems. We wanted to kind of get the underst... how the Hogan administration felt about the problems and explain to them what our problems were. So, we were able to do that, but also, we wanted to talk about what are we going to do in the next 20 to 25, 30 years long-term about the limited amount of water that we actually have here in the city, because we all know that water is the blood to the city. Without it, we're very limited in what we can do. The secretary seemed to indicate that the Hogan administration is very much in favor of looking at water reuse as the future of the Maryland... Maryland in general, so that was good to hear. Certainly, there's other challenges that go along with water reuse, you know, technical challenges, public health, writing new standards, where Maryland itself compared to other states hasn't been as progressive, you know, with that sort of out-of-the-box thinking. However, it's good to hear that the administration, along with the Maryland Department of the Environment, seems to want to take a closer look at that. So, that's long-term, and that can take a lot of time. However, they informed us that they are planning to put together an advisory committee to advise Maryland Department of the Environment on those types of things, you know, engineering, public health standards. And being that we have, as a city, some very good knowledge with Councilwoman Becker, with Jeff Glass, who's attended many water reuse seminars, we told the Secretary of the Environment that we would certainly like to be a part of that, because that... we can help the state, and that really will help us. So, he seemed amenable to that, which was very positive, and I'm excited about that. You know, the posture of MDE is they're very conservative, and he understands that, you know, very risk averse, so it's going to take, you know, education to that organization and working with other municipalities that have those challenges to move that agenda forward. So, long-term, you know, that's where we really need to go. You know, some of the short-term stuff we talked about, there's the... we've talked about a little bit of getting some potential relief with Metford Quarry, which that looks to be going forward. Certainly, I know the city has a meeting with them December 19th, along with the county, so the theme of it was it's more about partnership. It's about how can we help each other work through those challenges, and it was incredibly positive, and I was glad that the secretary was able to extend his time to us and the mayor. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councilman... Thank you, Councilman Yengling. That's outstanding work. We really appreciate you and the mayor taking the time to go down and meet with Secretary Grumbles. Obviously, the MDE is the agency with which we must work the most closely to solve our water problems, and it sounds like you guys did some great work moving the ball on that, so thank you.
Thank you.
I had something.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So, he... Councilman Yengling did a very good job of covering just about everything in the meeting, so I have very little ad about what was covered. I think it was a great meeting, it was productive. One of the things that I would like to point out is, you know, when you turn on the news and you look at the world today, you look at a lot of fighting and people disagreeing with each other, but I did find it interesting that it was, you know, Governor Hogan and Jerry Brown from California that are heading up a lot of this reuse stuff nationally. So, it's good to know, and I like to let people know that there are still politicians out there that are working very hard for the, you know, for the best for their constituents, and it's not all about one side versus the other.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Cavaci.
So, one brief report from the Public Safety Committee. We'll talk a little bit more about it later in the agenda relative to the mayor's appointment to my replacement on that committee. When we formed the committee, my intention was not to chair the Public Safety Advisory Council permanently. It was just long enough to get it up and running. We've done that. We have a real viable, outstanding person who's willing to take it over, and we'll talk about that a little bit later in the meeting, but I'm excited about that. We've got a meeting coming up this Wednesday, and assuming that we approve it, he'll take over then. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Dr. Becker.
Nothing to report from the standing committees, but just a fantastic job by Councilman Yengling and Mayor Dominic for that meeting with MDE. And again, just to reiterate, water reuse is where we'll need to go for the way forward.
Thank you. Councilman Pecorero was detained down in Baltimore at a late meeting, that's why he's not here today. I have just a couple of things I want to touch on. The first is there's a rumor going around about making Main Street one-way, so that is all it is, it's a rumor. There was some discussion in the context of making Westminster more bike-friendly, and we're looking at that seriously and looking at all possible options, but there's no plans or anything about making anything one-way. However, I got to say, I was in New York City, on Manhattan, this past weekend, and all of the major thoroughfares have bike lanes in Manhattan, so Manhattan, if they can figure that out, New York City, I think there's a way we can figure out how to get some bike lanes in downtown Westminster. So, we'll be... anybody has any ideas about that and thoughts about how we could do that? We're open to that, because we want to make downtown more accessible and pedestrian and Along those lines, Councilman Cavaci shared a document during our strategic planning retreat that outlined a forecast about the future of the automobile, and the quick and dirty is, is that this... these folks look at trends in autonomous vehicles and electric vehicles and, what do you call Uber and Lyft? Those are what, ride-sharing companies? Ride-sharing companies, and that the convergence of those three things will make private ownership of automobiles mostly irrelevant within, you know, 10 to 20 years, which will have a huge impact on traffic, obviously. It'll have a huge impact on the need for parking, but it will also have a huge impact on the revenue that the city gets from gasoline taxes, which will in turn affect how we maintain our roads. So, there's... if these four... if these trends play out the way that they forecast, even in the most modest scenario, there's going to be some fairly big changes that are going to affect the city in how we manage traffic, how we take care of our roads, how the impact on city finances that we have to start thinking about today. So, it's just, these are kind of the long-term things that we wrestle with, and but just so everybody knows, there's no imminent changes in traffic patterns planned. And that's all I have. Any council comments and items for council comments and discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Crabb.
Councilman Becker and I attended, I don't know, I guess, an informational discussion at the family...
At the...
Child...
Yes.
What the heck is it called? Sorry, having a moment.
Family and Children's Services.
Family and Children's Services. Say Child Services. Family and Children's Services facility that we actually own, but leased to them over in the old schoolhouse off of Union Street. I thought it was informative, we're going to talk about it in a little bit, but it was interesting to see what they do over there in person, go through the facility and kind of get a chance to look at it. There were a few other people in attendance, including the chief. Chief gave a kind of an overview of how the police work together so closely with them, particularly on the domestic violence side of what they do, and they play a... I think they play a pretty significant role in the community, maybe more so than I realized on that front in particular. So, I thought it was informative, they talked... they seem to have a couple of different things that they do. One's more related to adult daycare. They have another component that houses folks in some units that they have there that would probably otherwise be homeless, but then it seemed like a big chunk of what they do is the domestic violence function, that counseling and the helping the victims get services that they need in a quick and effective fashion, hopefully in most cases. So, I thought it was really informative, and I think it was worth our time being there.
Yeah.
And I know we'll talk about it... well, I don't know, is that in our agenda? No, maybe it's not.
It's...
Yeah, my mistake, yep.
Yeah, they also presented plans for new construction that they're interested in doing as well, so they're looking to expand other nonprofit organization, which I think will be a great benefit to the community as well.
And they're talking about vacating their... potentially vacating their space on Court Street, I think.
Yes.
I think they were...
Combining all their services...
Consolidate their Court Street location...
Onto the schoolhouse.
Into the schoolhouse.
Schoolhouse.
Right. So, I thought that was good. It was very informative.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Any further comments or discussion? All right, on to the next agenda item, the approval of the construction... the bid for construction of Phases 3 and 4 of the Westminster Fiber Network. Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir, I'm sure you'll recall back in August when San was authorized to proceed with the finish the design and construction for Phases 3 and 4 of the Westminster Fiber Network. Just a little geography, Phase 3 is generally banded by Maryland 31, south of Bishop Street, and the eastern and western city limits north of Maryland 27, and from Main Street to 140 south of Maryland 27 as well. Phase 4 is comprised pretty much of the area around Westminster Mall, parts of Central Street, Cranberry Road, south of Maryland 27, and follows the west boundary of the city to the area of Knopf Drive and Market Street. The project went out to bid in October with a bid due date on November 8th, 2017. It was advertised locally and on the Maryland Marketplace and the city's website as well. Interest in the project appeared very strong at first. Many people purchased plans and attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting, but the way it turned out, and I think probably because the existing contractor was... still had boots on the ground here, we only had one bid. And of course, that bid was from the existing contractor, Southern Maryland Cable Incorporated, or SMC, and that bid was in the amount of $4,158,000... one... no, $4,158,479.95, and of course, that was for both phases. The bid package was reviewed by city staff and also our consultant, CTC, and both found to be acceptable. The selling portions of the bid are included in the packet. If there are questions you may have there, they're attached for your review. We structured the bid so that Phase 3 was mandatory and Phase 4 was offered at the city's option as an add alternate. So, we did that before following the thought that if we had a contractor that maybe wasn't performing as well as we thought they should, we would handle one phase, and then we could always have the option to rebid the last one. But in this case, our experience with SMC has been quite well, so we would recommend to award both Phases 3 and 4 based on our experience. So, at this point, we would recommend that the common council award the contract for the construction of Phases 3 and 4 for the Westminster Fiber Network to Southern Maryland Cable in the amount of $4,158,479.95, and to authorize the mayor to execute that contract on the head of this...
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Mr. Cavaci.
So, how does that compare relative to what we anticipate? I know this phase is a little different in terms of how it's going to be constructed relative to the first couple of phases.
This one's different because there's overhead work involved with this one as well, but overall, the entire project is well under our estimated cost. Our bids have come in much lower than we thought.
So, it's similar. Now, do you think that is related to the fact that they now know what they're doing and realize that it's not as difficult as maybe they were anticipating, or what do you attribute that to? It's great. Maybe we shouldn't look a gift horse in the mouth, I'm just curious.
I think that... I think it's always better to come in under than over, obviously, and so therefore, it was estimated just a little high. That's probably the conservative side to do that. I think there's also a portion of that, as you mentioned, that the contractors have found that we're not entirely obese to deal with either, and I think that has made a difference as well. So, I think it's a combination of all.
There's also been some savings on the fiber. We've found ways to economize on purchasing bulk quantities of fiber optic cables.
That's true as well.
And I think I agree with Mr. Glass about the estimate. It was probably had some contingency built in because this was such an ambitious project and, you know...
Groundbreaking.
Yeah, a little bit of groundbreaking. We're not... yeah, we're not... we're one of the few municipalities, certainly of this size nationwide, to have done this, and so I think they were being very cautious in their estimates. But also, the contractor has done a great job, and they've been very well managed by our city staff, so I think all of those factors play into why the costs have come in lower than what we expected. Another thing to point out is that when we started the project, you know, again, not knowing the complexities and the difficulty of it, we had an estimate of it taking anywhere from three to five years, and we started in 2015, and it looks like... well, that's my question. I didn't see much about schedule in there. I know there's been discussion. Any... are they making any commitments about timeline?
Yes, sir, within a year, actually.
A year.
180 days.
Both phases?
Which I think is ambitious, so that's why I would say a year, but...
Yeah, so, let's just take the longer... even if it was a year, we'd still be finishing within that three-to-five-year timer, and actually, on the early side of that, which if... remember back, because we were learning as we went, and this was a new, ambitious kind of thing, the first couple of phases went very, very slowly, and we got way behind. And we've now caught up and are now, you know, if we continue at this pace, this sort of sprint to the finish will finish right on schedule, which is an amazing accomplishment. So, again, hats off to city staff and SMC for really pulling it together and getting this thing done.
Mr. President.
Dr. Becker.
So, the add-on for Phase 4 that you mentioned, even though that is an add-on, we shouldn't expect any additional cost for that outside of the $4 million?
That's included in the $4 million.
All right, great. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yengling.
Being that this is a large sum of money, I was wondering if I can ask Ms. Palmer a couple of questions about the financial aspects of the project.
Sure.
When do we start paying principal on this bond?
When the project is complete, when we're out of construction.
Okay. And the bond is fixed or variable?
It's variable.
What's the current take rate on the project itself? Was it 18% at the last meeting?
It was in your staff report, I don't have the exact numbers with me.
The thing, if the... I remember hearing 20% take rate. If we get 20% take rate, will costs associated with this principal, maintenance, and interest be covered by that take rate?
The fees were just... The fees were designed for the debt service to be paid at 20% take rate with a small subsidy from the general fund. It does not include any operating costs.
I can elaborate on that as well. Would you like me to?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So the, when we negotiated the rates with Ting, the assumption was that, the assumptions were all based on the project, the earlier estimated project costs, and that, those assumptions also were based on the rates, the rates that we negotiated, which would create a break even where the revenue from the lease payments would cover completely debt service somewhere around forty, a take rate of 40%. The 20% take rate was, there would still, between 20 and 40%, there would be a subsidy from city finances that we deemed to be acceptable. That was then. Now, with the project cost being much less, we're in the process of recalculating what break even will be, and it will be substantially less than 40%. So the short answer to your question is that at 20% take rate, there will be a subsidy, and at some take rate between 20 and 40%, we will break even.
That's with the principal?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yep. But not less operating costs. So that, that will be an extra expense.
So, Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
There's a follow-up on the financial side. We have already secured all bonding, correct?
We have, we pay interest on only what we draw at this point. We won't pay any principal until project completion.
But we don't need to go out for any more, the bonding part of it's done.
That's correct, it's been approved.
Any other questions from Mr. Glass or Ms. Palmer? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for construction of Phases Three and Four of the Westminster Fiber Network.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have no unfinished business, we have three items of new business. First is appointment of chairperson for the Westminster Public Safety Advisory Council. Mr. Mayor.
All right, so earlier this year, common council member Tony Kavachi proposed the formation of an entity to engage and partner with the community relative to public safety matters affecting the city of Westminster. His proposal resulted in the formation of the Westminster Public Safety Advisory Council, and the group's mission is to, I'm going to read verbatim here, provide advice and counsel to the chief, mayor, and common council on matters relating to law enforcement and public safety in the city. Also serve as a conduit for open communication and community engagement on issues relating to crime and public safety. So Councilman Kavachi, it was never his intention to be the chair of the council for its entirety, he wanted to get it started and then pass it on to someone else, and tonight, we are going to recommend that Mr. Ed Kramer be the chair for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions, Mayor Dominic?
Mr. President, just maybe a comment more so than a question. I've known Colonel Kramer for quite a while, and he has all the background, I think the right mindset and strength of character to really see this thing through and get to where we want it to be. I think we've laid the foundation, and I know under his leadership, it will become a viable tool for the chief and for us over the next, hopefully, number of years. So I'm enthusiastic he's willing to do it, I know he's got a very full plate, even though he officially has retired for the second time, he's still very busy, I know, with the reserve facility, what's going to be happening up there with the veteran services. So I was pleased when you agreed, or maybe acquiesced, to be the chairman, so I'm really, really enthusiastic and excited that he's going to do it, and I hope that we'll appoint him.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Colonel Ed Kramer as the chairman of the Westminster Public Safety Advisory Council.
Second that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next item is approval of legal counsel of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. President. In October 2014, the common council approved engagement for legal services from the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Eric Blitz. At that time, there was a series of candidates interviewed, it was a process conducted by my predecessor, Mr. Horn. As a result of that process, Mr. Blitz was chosen. There's, the only change that has occurred is that Mr. Blitz has put out his unshingled instead of being true wedding wolf, and there's an updated agreement, we will approve. We've worked with Mr. Blitz, a third professional under the Board of Zoning Appeals, as expressed their happiness with his work on a number of occasions, and staff would recommend approval, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Mayor.
So, it looks like when he was part of his firm, there were two rates quoted that we were paying, one for his services and one for paralegal, which was about half the hourly rate of his services. I noticed in the new contract, it only has his services, and I don't know if that's because if he's on the zone, maybe he doesn't have paralegal or not, but is that going to, you know, is that going to mean the city will be paying more for his services because he'll be doing the paralegal work at his rate and not have a blended rate between the two?
It's a good question. I'm trying to think back on bills, if there, if I can remember any billing for paralegal, I'll have to check the record on that, see if there was actual, there's legal service issues.
And all the difference would be significant, but that's, that's why I'm asking, I don't, I don't know, I don't, I didn't really know how much, how much work we gave Mr. Blitz last year, but I was just, I wanted to kind of ask that question, see if it would make a significant difference.
I can certainly find that answer.
All right, any other questions?
Well, enlightened that, Mr. Mayor, do, yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, I'm sorry, because I think that's an excellent question, and I'm disappointed I didn't catch that, Mr. Mayor, well done.
Glad to say it for you.
I wonder if you want to put this off, or does he have to have this done before our next meeting? Because I think that is a very valid question. If we get into some thick stuff where he's going to be spending a lot of time, that could be a significant difference in costs.
Mr. President.
Miss.
I just want to add, before, before we, one thing to consider, I know that the contractor or the agreement does say that we can end it anytime, so we're not entering into something long-term. So if, if we did see something that was significantly, you know, different, or we would have time to make changes, it, you know, does say that we can, we can end it anytime.
Ms. Levin.
Let me just, let me just say that the, Mr. Blitz is extremely experienced, he's been doing municipal work for a very long time, and so, which is relevant to the rate that he's charging you, which is a very good rate for legal services. And also that it would be unusual to me to see a lot of paralegal work with the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm not saying that he has not used a paralegal, but it would be, in my view, somewhat unusual. I don't think that when you check his statements, you're going to see a lot of that time.
So to those points, is there any reason to defer this approval, given that we can terminate it at any time, or is everybody comfortable with moving ahead?
I'm good.
I'm good with moving ahead.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the legal counsel agreement.
Second that.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the last is a motion to hold executive session immediately following regular meeting. Dr. Becker.
I'd like to move to make a motion to hold an executive session immediately following the regular meeting, based on the general provisions, Article 3-35B, for the council to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, and to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, honor departmental reports, Ms. Matthews.
Start off with Mr. Cumberland out there in the back.
Thank you. President, good evening. And to start off with, I'd like to wish everybody a very present, happy new year, happy Hanukkah, and a safe new year. Unfortunately, at the weekend, we had a tragedy with a volunteer in one of our neighboring counties. He was a deputy chief down in Rockville, and he was also deputy chief for the state fire marshal. That's a big loss, plus the FBI lost a person also. One of the major programs, highway safety, is what we're, unfortunate, strikes home quickly. Tying on to something that I drive, another thing that we're looking at on highway safety is the driverless vehicles, and how they will manage police officers, fire departments, who set up barricades or set up cones and stuff in the highway, and will we notice them? So we're working very close with federal highway on trying to see how we make those safer too as they come along, because they're here and they'll be in our community sometime soon, especially Uber and the other fire services come about, because they're already using, and also they're using them in incident delivery trucks already.
So when are we getting our first self-driving fire truck? Is that what you're telling us? Hook and ladder with two, 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 two things driving it?
Somewhere down the road, I probably won't see it. I mean, if you will.
Probably not.
I'm sure they'll be out there.
According to this report, we're all going to see it.
Yes, yeah, we'll see. For Westminster Department, the calls for a month in November was 174 fire calls, 84 of those in the city, 74 in the county, and 16 mutually. That's 50% of our calls were here in the city, 43% in the county. We averaged a turnout of five people per call, and believe it or not, out of those 74 calls, we had 39 overlapping calls, which puts a strain on the system.
Overlapping in time, or?
At the same time.
I see.
For the calendar year of 17, we've had 1,871 calls. The same, the same time period in 2016, we had 1,650 calls, so we're up 221 calls, and our fire loss for the year 2017 is $670,310, and unfortunately, that made it up after the first part of the week, we had a fire on Madison Street. Our EMS calls for the November were 400 compared to November 2016, 471. Year-to-date for 17, we were on 4,816 calls. Year-to-date 2016, we were on 400, 4,824 calls. We're down eight calls EMS calls. Our EMS department must be working better. Other than that, Sandy's out visiting the community, and you can track him on the Westminster Fire Department's stand-and-run Facebook page, and will be out till Thursday night, hoping we'll complete every call that we need by Thursday, the weather's bad on those nights. Friday will be our, will be our makeup date for that. And I would invite everybody Saturday to stop in at Down Street Quarters for breakfast from 7 to 11, pay and take breakfast for Sandy, and Sandy will be in the museum, and you can pick anything with him on the antique fire car. Other than that, thank you, and again, happy holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Glass?
Yes, ma'am, just a few things to talk about. One is our EMR roadway paving project, recently completed. We've done Manchester Avenue, 24th Street, Webster Street, and Buena Vista, and currently working right now in South Colony in the area pending, up at the upper end of the neighborhood on the east side. And that's only with one crew, it's working as we speak, the weather's starting to catch us a little bit, we felt we would have a second crew come in, but it doesn't appear that's going to be the case, but so far, that's just a slightly limited dollar, just being spent in the streets so far. The second item is our EMR project. So far, we have had to put out five addenda, it's been issued today, and accordingly, the due date has been pushed back to now January 4, the due date for the EMR project. That's all.
Mr. President. Mr. Kavachi.
Gazelle, how we doing?
Got the last items delivered Thursday. I've got a picture on my phone, I can show it to you.
I believe you.
Because I was there today, it was at 2:00, we had a meeting there as a walk-through, and it was, it would remind you of this time of the year, many little elves running around putting things together, so. At this point, we're looking at the potential commissioning in January.
Any singing of Oba Luba?
None that I've heard, but I'll get back to you.
Different movie.
That's a different movie. That's not Christmas.
Oh, you're right.
Ms. Gruber. Yes, good evening. So the winter weather on Saturday may have been inconvenient for some, but it's certainly added to a beautiful, beautiful atmosphere for our horse-drawn carriage rides in downtown Westminster. The Carroll County Times actually captured a beautiful photo of the carriage leaving last night, if you haven't seen that yet, please visit their website. And additionally, we had some riders on the carriages snap photos that were beautiful as well, and those are our Facebook page. So in times like that, where, you know, all of the stars sort of align and somebody has a really fantastic experience, you really get to see how grateful people are for the, for the gifts that the city gives, the citizens that live here and visitors alike. So, thank you for supporting that initiative. In addition to that, we are busy working, believe it or not, on summer seasonal wages. Our minimum wage does increase this July to 10/10. What that does is it always blows apart our wage rates for summer seasonals, because we like to reward those good employees that come back summer after summer and work for us, and so we like to give them a little bit of a raise, but when we bring in new hires and they're starting at higher than some of our seasoned employees, we really have to look at our pay scales and adjust everything accordingly. So we have decided upon those rates, and we've actually sent out our rehire letters today, hoping to catch some of our summer employees home on holiday break, so that they can either reply that they will be joining us again, and that way we will go into the year knowing how many summer seasonals we need to hire in their place. So that has happened. We also have started selling pool memberships, believe it or not. We do promote the sale of pool memberships for Christmas, and we have seen several of those requests come in, and we actually started printing pool memberships today, which is a little crazy. And in addition to that, we have picked the theme for our summer concert series and have selected all of the bands to date, so those contracts are being finalized. We'll have your summer road trip themes this year for our 2018 concert series. And lastly, we are closing in on almost 200 registered runners for the Celtic Cantor, so things are moving along quite quickly, and 2017 still exists except for the rec department, we are already living squarely in 2018, so that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Ms. Palmer.
Good evening, the, I'm finally in receipt of the city's audited financial reports. I did have some formatting corrections that I requested that the auditors correct, so it has delayed printing a little bit. I have placed the electronic copy out on the city's website, you can reach it by clicking on Government, Finance, and then there's a link for it in the upper right-hand corner of the page. So if you're really interested in reading them before you get your bound copies, you can find it online. And that's all I have for tonight.
Chief Spaulding.
Good evening. I usually get to report on those depressing public safety things, but I'm happy tonight that I get to follow my colleague, Ms. Gruber, with some positive things. Just wanted to report, we had a great shop with a cop event on Saturday. We provided a really super holiday for eight local families, including 22 children. It was not without some level of crises when we arrived at the senior center on Stoner Avenue for our holiday party, we found that there was a broken pipe in the ceiling that was spewing water down on the floor. So we, we had to deal with that, and then we had no heat for the rest of the day. So it was not without its challenges, but it was a great event all in all, and we are very pleased to have been able to do that based on the generosity of our community. Since the inception of the program 14 years ago, we've hosted nearly 300 local children, many of whom now are adults, from 130 local families, so it's great that we're able to do that because of our very generous community. Also, just to remind the council, we're hosting a holiday open house at the police department on Friday from 11:30 to 2:30, and I hope you have the opportunity, if you do have the opportunity, to stop by and spend some time with the staff. That's my report, and happy holidays.
Sounds easy. For the housing department, we have 274 families being assisted for December, and we have spent and had. We have spent in half, 177,597 dollars. We also have, sorry, hold on a second please. 812 people, 12 families on the wait list. We're working with finance to work on a fast submission of the unaudited, working with Ken from Tammy's Department. Also for code inspection, we're working on just continuing on compliance for everything that's outstanding. And we're recently working on rental housing license with the balance of 32 landlords that have not complied with paying the rental fees. I did reach out to 16 of them today and made contact and spoke with them and emailing and getting in touch with them to try and resolve those issues.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you. I'd like to start out tonight with commending our Main Street manager, Sandy Anderson. She was here a little earlier this evening, working with the mayor on the Mayor's Cup Awards. And in addition to the Mayor's Cup, along with Mrs. Christina Kuntz of the Carroll County Library, she was, she was able to complete the Small Business Passport Program. They drew 10 names for 10 winners for $100 gift certificates. Our comprehensive planner, Andrew Gray, filmed the event. It was livestreamed on Facebook and you can still see that on the Carroll County Downtown's Facebook page. And Sandy is a member of the Downtown, Carroll County Downtowns and they work together to do a series of events. This was the event that Sandy led. And I just wanted to say that participation by shoppers was three times higher than last year and business partner participation was twice as high as last year. So it's really seen a lot of growth and I think a lot of that's a result of Sandy going door-to-door and visiting every business and having things with her and handing out the passports and really being very active. And on another note, she's already started working with our city administrator and our farmers market vendors on next year's farmers market season and that opens in May. So a few other things I wanted to touch on. Some of the items before you tonight, for example, the consent items are prepared along with our city attorney by our engineering specialist, Barb Sardi. And all of us have been really working quite a bit and I wanted to add on trying to bring items to you related to Fairon Project. We believe that some of those things will be coming to you on January 8th. We'd hope that they would be here tonight. I just wanted to say that there's been quite a lot of effort to bring this to you and they will be coming. Finally, I want to talk a little about our comprehensive planner. He's preparing for the upcoming year. We have city, we have four city planning-related boards and commissions, a lot of meetings. Just want to highlight, your Planning and Zoning Commission will be finishing up on their Crossroads Square Shopping Center review recommendation on Thursday, as well as finishing with their mid-cycle review. And they will be beginning a public hearing to talk about a proposed medical cannabis dispensary at 700 K Corporate Center Road. Mr. Gray has also worked with our city arborists to prepare another grant application for almost $5,000 to treat ash trees in the city. We're excited for that application and we're beginning to prepare for Arbor Day. Our tree commission will meet tomorrow at 4:30 on the second floor at 56 West Main Street. And on the topic of 56 West Main Street, I'm excited to present you with a submission that we received from Comp Creative. We asked them to put together some ideas for our storefront windows. This is a big, big one. I have a little version for all of you and some extras. So this is a proposal for the windows at 56 West Main Street. It is, it is an abstracted design. It will have LED lights that light up and there's 256 colors. We can choose some if you're interested. I have more. And our, the idea is that our storefront will be sort of a model, but we lead by example. So it's a creative design. It's, as I said, an abstracted design and we're looking forward to seeing that be installed very soon. So I want to thank you all for your support. This is part of our Main Street Refocus Program and in particular, this is the model storefront program. So thank you very much.
Just wanted to remind the mayor and council that we'll be holding our annual employee holiday luncheon this Thursday from 12 to 2:00. And at the luncheon, we'll be giving out our service awards to employees who reached service milestone during 2017. Also, just wanted to share with you that the Comp and Class Study is moving along well. We got an update today from Evergreen Consultants. Still a few stragglers, but we're getting a fairly good response to the salary and benefit survey that Evergreen sent out and we still are on target for having that study completed by around the end of January or early February, which should tie in very nicely with our budget process. That concludes all the departmental reports. We'd be happy to answer any questions the mayor and council have.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Carrachan.
One quick question, Mrs. Valencicee. What, you said there's 32 properties or landlords that have not paid for their licenses, correct? And that's because we already know that they have rental properties and, and they just haven't paid those fees or these are folks that, that you assume do and are waiting to come in? Tell me who they are, not who by name, but what category they fall into.
So they, they were sent an application and an invoice for the beginning of the fiscal year on July 1st. And by, when I called, there are a few that did say that their unit is no longer-
They're no longer rental, right.
Rental. So we did have a couple of those, which if they would have read that and then turned the back over and checked the box and mailed it back, we wouldn't have to have that conversation. But, and there is others that just did not pay and had questions about it and then-
So how did they get on that list in the first place? Did they pay previously?
Right. So we, they were in, yes, they were in the data.
So we're not out actively necessarily trying to say, okay, that looks like that's a rental and sending them a bill? We're not, okay.
I mean, if we were to get a report because Cindy's office had some sort of interaction with a tenant and then we looked up and they did not have a license, we would be pursuing that.
Or if someone calls to have the water and sewer turned in for a tenant and that may not be listed as a rental, we may then send them an application.
In a tenant's name.
Correct.
Makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All right. We are on to the point in the meeting for citizen comments. If you have anything you want to share, please raise your hand and identify yourself with your name and address for the clerk. Yes, ma'am?
Susan Martiz, 3151 Spring Jide, Westminster, 1157. We submitted around six months ago, request, first of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you for us winning the Snow and Love. I had a lot of fun participating in it. Thank you very much. And Mr. Glass, I hope our vendors are cooperating much better than they were in the past. We're, we're on them. About six months ago, we submitted a request for valet parking, or at least to have a discussion about it with Mr. Mackey and Mrs. Matthews. We have not had any progress on this at all. So I'm just curious what we need to do if we can do such groundbreaking things as, you know, putting a fiber network in Westminster. I think with all the wisdom in this room, we can probably try to figure out how to make it happen, not just for us, but for any other downtown restaurants that this would be beneficial for. So I don't know if we need a round table. I'm not sure, but let's either say, no, we're not going to do this, or let's say, let's give it a try. Let's see how it works. If it's an inconvenience to residents, then, then we'll know. But right now, you know, we have guests coming in from Montgomery County, Anaroma County. They're not familiar with the parking around here. They ask us all the time, why don't you have valet? It's a good question. I'm not sure.
For the mayor and council's benefit, the issue that we've struggled with, which I've shared, is the, how do you reserve space on a public street for a private purpose? So that's the issue we've been trying to get our arms around. I did send an email asking for certain information, I believe it was last week. I don't know. I can forward that again, but wanted to clarify exactly how many spaces you thought you needed and clarifying the times. So if you could share that information this evening, that would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, it would just be two spaces, I think, would be all that we would need and we would only do it between the hours of 5:00 and 9:00 on Friday and Saturday evening, which most of businesses are already closed. Possibly we would do it on holidays, like New Year's Eve falls on a Sunday, those kind of events. I think that, and we would be using a bonded company. We would not be doing this ourself. I might want to take that line.
So where would they go?
Well, we've already come to an agreement, Mr. Mackey, Barb, us. We're going to be required to lease approximately 16 spots in a parking garage next to a Lord Christmas.
Got it.
So if we're paying for it, hey, let us go take these cars and go park them in our spots that no one's going to know about except for us.
So the issue is the, on Main Street, those spots worth pulling up?
Correct.
That's the issue.
Yeah. They'd have to really, they'd have to really have spaces where someone could pull out, otherwise it's blocking traffic on Main Street.
Sure. So there's anything in the code that precludes that?
No, I think it's more the underlying principle is do you use a public asset for a private purpose? It's really the issue we've struggled with.
I think many cities do that.
Yeah.
Maybe we discuss with them how they make it happen.
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Yes, sir.
Ed Kramer, 371 Wingfoot Drive, Westminster, 21158. Just want to thank the mayor, the council, and the staff for trusting that I will be able to lead this Public Safety Advisory Council. I'm happy to convince you that, although somewhat reservedly, but not in any other way, from a time constraint, but we're the project. Been involved and look forward to staying involved. Secondly, I wanted to ask a question, maybe to Ben directly or to the council in overall about in your discussions with MBE, did the city get any immediate, immediate confirms of water allocation?
No.
No.
I'll just say that the, our meeting with MBE was about building a relationship with MBE. Our, our staff is meeting with their staff on December 19th and they're going to get into a little bit more of the nitty-gritty and the details and I think that's, and those are the people that should talk about it. Because if you have Ben and I talking about the exact number of gallons per day, it can come out of different sources and, and, you know, get down to the science of it and then you have the top people at MBE talking about the same thing when they're looking over the whole state, we're, you know, we're probably just going to go around in a bunch of circles. So it was about starting a conversation, creating a relationship with them and, and, you know, having, having the secretary of MBE, you know, let, let his staff know that we are willing to do what it takes, be creative, think out of the box and get some things done. And I think that'll help, you know, I think it'll help staff move forward. They'll be the ones that will be really moving things forward on the 19th.
I ask the question also from the point of view of being chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city and I'm happy that you all agreed to keep Eric Blitz on. I've given this feedback back to, to Mr. Mackey and to Barb as well on a number of occasions. I think we are doing a better job now than we've ever done with this board and especially with the organization that Bill and Drew have brought to the whole process. And Eric Blitz has been absolutely remarkable, in my view. I've been on this board since 2004. I don't think we've ever had better legal counsel, so I'm happy to hear that you approved that. One final issue, not so much an issue, just a question. In the process of the fiber installation, bringing it up to the house and how those lines were run, obviously, they used a ditch witch to do that. And in so doing, some of us who really pride ourselves in our lawn and what our front looks like, unevenness of what was left concerns me, but here we are in winter and finally get all the leaves policed up and things don't look good and they don't typically look good this time of year. But if comes spring, there's some remediation that's needed, is there any way homeowner can come back to the city to have that looked at and perhaps taken care of?
Short answer is yes, but Mr. Glass can give you details.
Yeah, that's all, punchless silence. We're going to have some of that. Right now, you're not going to keep our grass anyway, so there certainly will be some fine tuning to do. We'll be interested in that.
Good. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? All right. Where'd you earn?
Where are you going to put that trophy? You got to find the place.
Oh, my God. Okay. Are they 10?
You got to display it. I didn't know.
I'm proud. No, but I didn't like-